Thursday the fourteenth and this is the Marlinton Local School District Board of Education meeting. Stand for the touch of the agents please.
Caller roll please.
Josh Hagan here. Karen Humphreys.
Here.
Kathy Krupko.
Here.
Mark Ryan here. Jonathan Swift.
The reading of the mission statement, this is Krupko. In collaboration with staff, community parents and students, the Marlinton Local School District will develop lifelong learners who understand and apply knowledge and demonstrate excellence in pursuing the highest standards with the depth of intervention taught to every student. Thank you. Are there additions or corrections to the meeting agenda?
None.
Is there motion to adopt a meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Question? Caller roll please.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphreys?
Yes.
Mr. Boss?
Let's pray. Dear Lord, we thank you and that we can meet like this. We pray that you bless the board and help them make good decisions that will benefit the children of our community. Please give them wisdom and protect the students this year, we ask. In Jesus' name we pray.
Take due session. Motion for the board adjournings like the session person to revise code 121.22G5 for the following purpose: to discuss match required and be kept confidential by state and federal law.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Caller roll please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphreys?
Yes.
Time is six oh two.
I didn't want you to be lonely.
Oh, they do.
Miss everybody out.
They're in the executive session.
How long does this take?
I don't know, they went in about seven minutes ago.
First one they've had for a long time.
What's that?
It's the first executive session they've had in a long time.
Yeah, they won't know how to act. It's a good thing they don't make money off of the admissions here.
They all think the date would be too great on this.
I think they might have to pay us. How do you get ten people there? You pay them fifty bucks a person?
So what's the word?
Oh, we were down in Lewisville getting our trust made up today.
Oh, it was the, your new lawyer?
Mm-hmm.
Cool. We were there all day.
We were there from two o'clock to about four.
Wait, did you get your bill?
I already got the bill. We paid the bill before we showed up.
Oh. The last time I used the water, he charged me for a stale. I'm like, you're kidding me.
Oh, no, that's just the way life is, huh? I think ours were like sixty, seven hundred bucks to do that.
Okay, uh, to connect the sessions, it's 3:00 PM. Hey, OSBA presentation, this is for Cross.
Yeah, you're close to the mic.
Is that better? Yeah, okay.
What's your name again?
It's fine.
Derek Thadswor.
There you go. Very happy. Okay, um, there have been a lot of things in our emails from Ohio E&amp;A, which is really looking into the charter schools and voucher schemes. Three decades ago, state officials in Ohio initiated charter schools and voucher schemes as a result of the public, as pilot projects to determine if Ohio education could be improved by the alternatives. Both projects failed, yet to date, we have spent, vouchers have hidden millions upon billions of dollars for public scrutiny, and over 300 school districts have been supporting the coalition about that vouchers hurt Ohioite choice and voucher litigation. It has been determined that it's unconstitutional, but of course, the voucher people are fighting that, so it's an ongoing process, but we'll see where it goes. There have been several states in the United States that have declared that the voucher system is unconstitutional. House Bill 96, which was all the financial stuff, went through with some modifications and vetoes by the governor. He specifically issued 67 line item vetoes, the ones connected to education, our non-chartered educational savings and health program, SDRS and SDRS employee contributions, partisan school board elections, county budget permission authority and procedure, 40% balance, cash balance carryover, 20 mil four calculation, school district property tax restrictions. In his message, the governor emphasized the need for comprehensive property tax reform and announced plans to convene a working group that will include legislators, agency officials, and school officials and community members and tax policy experts. He has now announced the, the members of this group, they held their first meeting, and he is asking them for concrete proposals by September 30th. They have done some scoring, COVID rebound scoring for reading. Five years after the COVID epidemic shutdowns, epidemic shutdown, schools have, uh, and, yeah, I can't answer. Five years after the COVID epidemic shut down schools and moved learning to online platforms, reading scores are improving for the youngest students in the school districts. There have been significant gains in literacy skills among K-12 students. Kindergartners have experienced the highest increase in meeting and exceeding their reading benchmarks. The percentage of these students has jumped 21 points from 49% to 70% in the most recent school year throughout Ohio. The trend is less dramatic in the older students, and students considered to be far behind at the start of the academic year has been steadily decreasing. The OSBA hired a, finally a new CEO, Kathy McFarlane, who designed in the spring. His name is Thomas Ossler. He will start September 1st. He will spend, he was superintendent at Perryburg, Perrysburg, exempted village schools in northwest Ohio for the past 18 years, and leading school districts for a total of 25 years, including seven in the Downriver Detroit area. Under his leadership, Perrysburg launched a public school development office to secure millions in private support and established departments for college advising, careers, and community support. There are still, apparently, more than 80% of K-12 schools are experiencing back breaches this year, so the ransom wire attacks on schools are still rising. And there are some, the Byno budget included several policy changes that will affect our school policies, and usually what I tell you each, you already know about it on the top of it, so we know a little bit, we'll hold it anyway. We have to have a very specific cell phone policy. We used to be able to adapt it to our own needs, but the, the new bill now requires that a school's adopted policy by January 1st, 2026, that prohibits the use of cell phones by students during the instructional day. But they don't define instructional day, and mainly, you also have to have some accommodations for emergency situations. We also have kind of a policy on artificial intelligence, and there's been some modifications to the religious instructional release time.
Wow.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. For the update?
Very good. Okay, as for the AI policy, we did approve that back when you all followed the spring on it. As for any religious release time, we also approved in our cell phone policies up to date, and we also, since we board approved our handbooks, we define that as no instructional time in our middle school at all. We lock them in lockers. That's where they're at, if you have access, if they would need it. It says high school obviously is zero instructional time up in the classroom, but they do have the ability to use their cell phone during open time. That would include maybe lunch or recess, not recess, lunch or study hall or something like that, if their instructional time is needed.
Okay.
It's welcome to August 14th. My superintendent report, sticking with our purpose, which is... ...other projects, because the summer's still not quite over for us yet. I always get a staff in history in the summer, and I can explain that in the... And then, kind of where we're going. So here, let's open up here, here we go. All right. Let me go to... All right. So these are projects that, obviously, we have, that's been ongoing since June, almost since the kids let out, we're still there, so we're gonna, we thought this, well, let's talk about high school roof. Let me set this on like, real slow speed. All right, so we have pictures of the four. So we did two phases, if you guys understand, we were able to, based on Nexus Pipeline being settled, the large transfer we were getting in, and the back interest gave us the ability to go ahead and complete the high school roof completely. So we did phase three and four in one shot, which was well over two, I think it was like $2.2 million, you know, to complete that project. So again, some of the four pictures. During, just the tear off phase, we get CDs every year. And we have probably, you know, Team Craft does the roof, basically has to do it daily, pictures before, after, the weather, it's a middle large booklet at the end that kind of gives you the detail of, you know, day by day, this is all there in. And then after. So officially, all five of our buildings, including the mortician building, if you remember, we did that part of phase one, and we did some mullinside repair on our roof there. I think all our roofs are in pretty good shape. I mean, in pretty good shape, they are, pretty good. So I do thank the board for going ahead and allowing that to be approved, get that done. High school parking lot, that also gave us a chance. We had that broken down originally in three phases. We did phase one last year, which was around the high school. We are now, we decided to do phase two and three, which is basically the rest of the lot. I think it's been about 20-some years for the lot. We sealed it and like, kept up with it, so, but actually, you know, grind it down a little bit and do that, so that was during them, you know, going through the grinding process. Also during, I started to lay it. There's the after, and if you've been out there, it's, it really, really looks sharp, you know, we're just gonna, that will then go into, basically, we'll keep up with that now, about every two years, with some type of reseal or, you know, just to make sure that it lasts, you know, as long as it should, to keep up with it. High school lighting, that's the other, you know, you have approval, I guess, for high school, finished middle school lighting. Our high school parking lot was dark, so we had these islands, obviously, you know the islands that are out there that are all grass, so those were all kind of, the islands are kind of trenched. As you can see there now, we got the lights up. Middle school sidewalks, just in shambles, it was, fall apart pretty good, a lot of cracks. It gets used a lot by our community in the evening, it gets walked a lot of, basically one lap around that sidewalk is almost 400 yards, so basically about four laps, we put you in the mile, it's not quite that, but it's right around there. A little bit of pictures for four. Obviously, during. And they did the sidewalk in phases. It was really amazing how quickly they did that, because the first part of our summer was pretty wet, and we had a lot, and the weather was pretty inconsistent. But if you've been out in those four right now, it looks really nice, freshens the middle school, makes the whole outlook of the building look different, so it's gonna be a nice addition for our community to use and our kids. This is after. Some more. Now, the middle school flagpole, I'm sure that you're aware, as far as I've been here, it's pushing 21 years, it's been tilted, crooked, yep. So, we decided that, let's, let's, let's fix the crooked flagpole, okay? Brought a crane in, and that's all cement, by the way, that's not dirt, that's N1. So, uh, we did, we did not buy a new flagpole, we actually, well, had a group go out and basically hammer and chisel with a jackhammer and clear off all the cement to get the flagpole back to be able to be resemented, because the thing, it was, uh, the flagpole wasn't really good shape, there was no reason to. Why either was, I have no idea, this might be four, I've been here this, went on 21 years, and it's always been tilted. Now, it's, it's, it's straight. A little bit of this. Uh, Marlboro Playground, now, this was not one that was in, as part of something the board approved, we talked about this, but we had, I would say, four, I don't, I'll give you the exact donors, hopefully, next meeting, but right now, there was four anonymous donors that stepped up that came and met with back in the spring and said, you know, we would like to add new playground equipment to Marlboro. We had a company saying we'd like to break up the asphalt and grind it down, new basketball courts, so this was no cost to our district, the only ask was, it really wasn't an ask, it was one that I said, hey, when this is done, we would remulch it, because we always do mulch in the playground, so we would do the mulch side of it. So that's just during the project out there at Marlboro. Obviously, this was originally on a list to tack down the road, but this, this, the donors were, gave us an opportunity to get this done over the summer. So you can see the new piece of playground equipment.
Individuals or businesses?
Individuals. There is one business slash individual, so we're working with them now, I think that they have come to the conclusion that, I think we can bring up a, I'm hoping to be able to have them as a donation, it'll be on their next board agenda, and we can recognize the fact that they did that, because I think it's pretty special that they're willing to do that. So you see that equipment, playground equipment, I don't know if you know, commercial playground equipment is not cheap, I mean, be very clear, I mean, you can take a picture of that and go to Playtime Structures or a couple others and say, I'd like this, to price out this exact piece of equipment, they're probably gonna tell you, I think it's maybe $120,000, maybe, just for the piece of equipment. All right, that doesn't include the canopy over there, that. Uh, there it is, after, and we just reseeded, you know, between the mulch, and there's some reseeding in that, it's definitely a different look for the playground. And obviously, then, we have new hoops, there are grill hoops that go up and down, and obviously, the asphalt was grinded and redone and graded a specific way, and there was a drainage basin put in at the end, down there to... a drainage basin put in at the end, down there to be, I want to say the right of that second basketball hoop that needs out then out into the field. High school parking lot island, I think you kind of saw a glimpse of them during the thing, that was kind of something that's been on my docket since I've come over, is just, you know, we just got a grassy bump there, but since we're putting the electric in and digging them up, it's pretty hard to mow. You know, you got a single mower out there, like why wouldn't we just rock it and be done and do that right? So we were able to pull that off, have a company come in and kind of really dig down in there a little bit, clean it up. And then, so if you look out at our high school, we saw the islands now are rocks and something that can kind of permanently stay and we're not having to mow that. Our cross-country course, we have two big races, just so you know, every year we have the Ashley White stuff and then we have our own, we run the EBC cross-country. It's, we run through our woods. Well, the OHSA has very specific rules in the last few years, like you can't no longer run through pricks or water or different things like that, and so we've been kind of working through the process, so this is kind of a little problem now for our kids to run through. It's been an ongoing problem for years, so we just kind of wanted to address it from more of a...
I think that's a long survey.
Yeah, that's not a lot, so, so we kind of, we had to address that, so we had to put a couple culvers in there and get this so they actually have something to run over, because we didn't want to lose, you know, the Ashley White stuff is very large, it's a, it's a good, it's good for the community and it's actually a good fundraiser. It's something that we were able to also accomplish in addition to here over the summer. There's the after. I don't know how many, like if you guys want to run or walk back there, it's open, it's also a nice walk, you know, so like we do have community members that do just walk and, you know, bring their dogs and go out and do that, which is nice. This was one that also was not on the docket that does a last-minute addition. So we, the roofers found a drain that was clogged. And they, you know, when they go through, they find, they unclog the drain, no big deal. This drain's been clogged for probably 20 years, who knows? The drain that goes then into our school was not connected to anything. And to, on my notes to anybody, at least that I spoke to, which Rayo was unaware of it, Al was way before Al was here. So we did that rain over the course of summer, so that rain went into our cafeteria, just the main cafeteria. We did fix the drain that goes into, but at the same time, our cafeteria has tile, so different sections throughout the cafeteria. And it wasn't like inches and inches been enough, it was enough to make sure that the whole floor was wet and soaked down in, it bubbled up the tops. So our ultimate thought was, Rayo said, we'll just get the tile up, replace it with a new top. Well, obviously, there's a, we opened the tile up and what you know it, underneath it is a mess. Okay, so, you know, to do it right and to do it and be legally correct, which we've dealt with this, you know, obviously, almost every year now, something, this was small. We just decided to abate the entire cafeteria and be done, because most of the high school is terrazzoed for it. So why that is, I don't know, somebody, I think Josh asked me, because why would that section be that way? And I guess I don't know the answer when the high school was built, why that, why that happened. So the cost for that was about 17,000 roughly?
Yeah, seventeen thousand eight hundred.
Seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars to abate the entire cafeteria. So that is completed, just so you know, the entire cafeteria is done and completed, so we are then adding, and I don't think I have pictures of the after, because it's not done. So right now, we are in the process of redoing the floor. We're not putting tile back down or doing something similar to like we did in the CTE room. We had to add something that we can be, you know, a little bit more user-friendly, plus it would, you know, more adorable in the locker.
Is that a little bit of a present also?
No, it actually does not. That's, the kitchen is actually terrazzoed.
Carpet, huh?
No carpet, no, it's like a factory. Like the new, we got the grant for the...
I can't remember what it was.
It's an epoxy floor, so it would be, so different from like these garage floor finishes.
Oh, we made yourself.
It would, no, it's more like epoxy, but according to Alan, we'll save money in the sense of it won't be stripped, stripped and waxed also.
So we're still waiting on completion there. Our completion date should be August 22nd, so we might look in the next six or seven days here, we'll have that wrapped up. So, beyond that. Softball drainage, so I don't know if you guys are aware, so we, back there with the old asphalt, we're the, you have the softball field and you got the batting cage for the softball team in the back corner of our parking lot. If it rained at all, our drain would not drain, so there's two drains back there. So we actually had them come out and I wanted that addressed, why would we do all the asphalt if drains weren't working right? So we had major drains, so we actually had that dug up where it drains where it should and then it drains into the next drain, and then we had it draining into our pond. So now that rain sets then and it's just, those are just old, it's broken drain pile. We were able now to see that's the drain there, as you can see on the left, we connected that first drain to the drain in the back, which is behind the fence, that drain in the back right there, you can see that we trench all the way out to the pond, so it'll be the one, you know, the second picture there, it's, it drains straight out to the pond.
So what's all the drain that you found, right out by the, by the football field? Right out of the something between the football field and the softball?
We don't know, that's, it's been there for years, it's a...
Is it any better or different?
This helps the softball seals they dry, but down there, no. That'll be addressed probably in the next two to three years when we have to address some type of track maintenance or dirt maintenance or something, you know, down the road.
Those drains?
No, it's, there's no drain down there. This is like, it's like a, it's just like, there's a section of like 10 feet, we should talk about, we got around the block, outside of our football field, track, it's like standing water, you know? You know, it's dry now, but we've had 20 days. So that's enough, so that was a big help to them. So that's, that's the major projects that you guys approved, you know, back, we actually were early on this because we were able to get them done, so we're like, well, we did, we did these back last November, December, if you remember, because we needed to kind of make sure that we got on the docket for the roof and materials ordered and also maybe to get them there early enough so we could get these done, knowing that we start sports so early, we kind of wanted to make sure, so I appreciate that.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
The port culture area, I know we redid the roof, who's maintaining the pavilion and all the other structures that were put up?
So our Danny Lamarcus and his landscaping crew, once they start the fall, they'll catch up what they know, so they do that in spring and then they keep up with it, kind of gets a little bit, I would say overgrown a little bit over the summer, we just don't have his group of kids doing that. Probably our next project is to kind of look at how that's gonna look moving forward. The walk path itself and soccer stadium itself, I didn't have any, I bet, I should, I guess I should have put pictures on there, but we had probably a hundred parent volunteers show up on a Saturday or Sunday, or Sunday actually, Sunday at two o'clock. And they redid all the bleachers and the soccer, basically all the wood came off and they put brand new, loaded all the bolts. They cleaned out all the concession stands, the bathrooms were all redone, and then they turned around and weeded the entire soccer field, all the flower beds, and then they sprayed and did all that, and they took a group picture, so if you looked on Facebook on there, you would have saw the big thanks that just goes to show you, you know, all the soccer boosters did was say, hey, we need help, can you give us a couple hours? And we had well over 50, maybe 75 parents show up and they actually accomplished all an hour and a half. It was pretty impressive, so. Good? All right, any questions about the summer project?
When did you say the roof, we done?
The roof is done, it is done, our secondly, yeah. All right, I, every August, I just go back and look. So I was in interim in the summer of '22, and that's the year that we had, you know, a lot of teachers that, you know, decided to try different districts, retire or whatever, so we, you know, and that was the same time, we were also in a financial, huge financial crunch, so it kind of was, and we just, what I call right the ship that year, you know, we kind of needed, it was okay, we could take the hits, 14 positions we didn't replace, we talked about the cost of that. This is nothing new, I've shared, I share this every year. Then obviously, my, at the end of my first year, we continued, I was always look at, there was nine positions that we didn't replace, let's say this that, there was 30 positions that we did replace at a cost of that, so please understand there was a cost, so we didn't, there was no savings on, you know, the 39 positions that were shuffled around that year, but we did have a saving of 329.
This is all staff?
Huh? All staff, this is all staff, 100%.
Teachers, teachers.
Doesn't matter who you are, correct after your, yeah, absolutely, all staff. In general, because that's what you look at, you know, from that aspect of it. The only thing I don't put in there is the purchase service portion. You know, like when I say purchase service or contract, like in after, when I first got hired, we were paying them 60 or 70 thousand dollars to do something that I just said, well, we need to do that, so we just let it go. So those aren't in these numbers, you know, those are what I call purchase services. Then my second year again, technically second full year, not in the interim year, so we had, you know, then last year, four positions weren't replaced at that cost, then we had 24 positions that were replaced, but we did have a savings there because we hired staff at a lower amount, so that gives a total savings as an estimate there. And then obviously this year, and I still gotta update this, I'm still, I think this is, I have a, I looked at it, actually, if I had my notes and there's, I think I got three bus routes, so I could actually add another position there. So I have seven positions that weren't replaced with a savings of about 494,000, 19 positions that were replaced at savings of about 18,000, so about 562,000. So I mean, over the course of four years, from a staffing position, we have not replaced from a staffing in general certified or classified 34 staff, okay? We have not replaced, that's where we trimmed 34 staff from our, from our budget. When you take that, what it is, I had to add it up, I did not, I guess it's around 2.2, 2.4 million dollars, you know, but at the same time, like Bob says, you know, the order, it helps because we've been able to keep that in our fire forecast, because if we had that on the books, it would be huge, but we also have inflation, step raises, things like that, so it's not as simple as saying, hey, you saved 2.4 million every year, it's just, that's not a realistic way to tell anyone. But we wouldn't be in a financial position we are now if we would have just let those just replaced, just to replace. So, but I think that's a, and I'll give more details at summer, I'm sorry, it's August, I always kind of give you, since I have stepped foot here, this is kind of the direction we've gone, you know, in a very just broad sense, so obviously you have one more details before you know. Climate culture as well, it's, I believe, you know, we have, we have established and got staffing to come here strictly because of our culture. We have, we have, we got two staff members this year that came to the high school that took pay cuts from other districts just because they wanted to be here. You know, we do try to celebrate our individual successes, not everybody agrees and thinks we have a great culture, that's fine, I'm out here to make everybody happy. But I think, you know, we, our district and our staff and our bus drivers, to our folks, to our custodians, to our secretaries, to our certified teachers, they work so hard to communicate our vision, our purpose, embrace our rituals and traditions, encourage collaboration. We try to, we, you know, when I say maintain a culture of shared leadership, that's our name with our PLT, I mean, those teachers drive what we do. So that's kind of where we're gonna stick with that. What I say moving forward, this is what, the next couple of months, this is kind of what I want to kind of, will be addressing with you, either through a work session or a board meeting, it really doesn't, it's gonna happen. So you know, obviously for my community meetings, this is normal for me, this is not anything new. I'll be heading to township meetings, just giving them a general update of what's going on, I will be setting meetings at various locations in the three townships, just to kind of allow people to ask questions and I can give brief updates, I've been doing this since I started. Major projects in the district, we need to start talking about that, okay? What do we want to talk about, move forward 25, 26? I'm gonna give you current staffing numbers, a lot of people, like I gave you back in June, staffing numbers from the secure data center, I think I'm just gonna log in and show you right out of the Department of Education workforce, the actual data number, how it is. I told you every month, I'll be giving you enrollment numbers, I started that in June, obviously we don't have school yet, so I don't have, that's not in your package. You guys approved this teaching plan, said in there that we would review it yearly, so we are gonna do that, as far as we're at. Renee will be coming in September to do a curriculum update, and Bob is also gonna be doing a finance update, so those are things that sometimes we address in August, sometimes then, they're not long, but it's good to start the year off and ensure you guys are informed of what's going on all of the months, that's kind of where we're gonna be at. Any questions for me? That's all I got for now.
Thank you. How about appreciation, did everyone sign up to see?
Yeah.
Thank you. There's no old business, new business?
Okay. All right, new business. All right, we have a few items for new business today. First one is recommend the motion to approve the following bus routes for the 2025, 2026 school year as shown in exhibit A. These, every year, you guys have to approve our bus routes, then you do have them in front of you by all three townships. You, as you can see, they, you would compare them to last year's bus routes, we are three routes smaller this year, so I did ask Sherry to absorb or cut three routes we had through a trip, you know, basically drivers that have retired, so that would bring us to a total of six routes we've taken off the road in three years.
Do we trend at all, I know we have to provide a basic spread, we're not, do we achieve any...
Yes, we have a yearly count, we have to submit to the Department of Education workforce for exactly how many kids ride our bus, you know, so we're required to submit that, so I can get that, once the year starts, maybe an idea by route or at least by township, you know, what, who's riding and who's not.
And I know I asked you earlier, but your parents will find out, drop off, pick up times?
Yes, that date, I want to say it's August, it's either Monday or Tuesday next week, that date will actually be available on our website in the bus, in the bus section or transportation section, and then also, what we did last year for the first time, it worked out wonderful, we will send a parent square message out that will tell you, let's just say, my kid, Jay Swisher, you're on bus XYZ, your general pickup time will be blah, 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 between blah, 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 and your drop off time will be between X time and B time, so that also goes out too, so I can't say when, I'm gonna say within the next probably two weeks, every parent will have a rough idea of what their route will be and average pickup and drop off.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Father Wolf.
Ms. Grupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries? Okay, item number two, new business, recommend the motion to approve the following foreign exchange students for the 2025, 2026 school year as shown in exhibit B and E. Again, I will not try to say the name correctly. I was waiting for you to...
How many are there?
Four.
Four, how many are there?
Yeah. So you have the attachments with you.
Father Wolf.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Two from Spain, one from Germany.
Yes, I think we will have one more added next.
That's what I was.
Item number three, recommend the motion to approve the following outstate field trip as shown in exhibit F, the band to Orlando, Florida, April sixth through the eleventh, two thousand twenty-six. So move. Second.
This is the annual.
Mr. Annual Trip, yes.
Father, will please.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Item number four, recommend the motion to approve the following transportation and lieu agreement for the, for two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So this is what student that, um, we did not get on for last year. So that's for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Any discussion? Father, will please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Item number five, recommend the board to approve the following contract, FY twenty-six dash five eight.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Father, will please.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan? Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Okay, item number six, new business. Recommend the motion to approve the following amended health department contract for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year as shown in exhibit F. So move. Second. You guys already approved the health department contract. What had the health department, we had two nurses that was approved to one nurse. They just, that's the way we've been for years. They have decided just to go to one nurse period here. So instead of having two, so this is just an MOU, no price change, nothing like that. Hours are the same. It's just that instead of having two nurses doing the same job and splitting it up throughout the week, it's just one. Just one, make it more aware. Yeah, we always, it's the same thing. We have somebody here every day, so somebody will be here every day. So that's no different than before. We had two, one was here one day and the other one wasn't.
Yeah, but do the, without five buildings over.
Yeah. She rotates.
Okay. Father, will please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Item number seven, recommend the motion to approve the following subrates for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year as listed. County subrate one-ten, preferred subrate one-thirty, long-term subrate one-fifty.
So move.
Asking if this is a change. For the last two years, this is a change. We have, we have gone up ten dollars for the county subrate. We have gone up ten dollars for the preferred subrate, just to try to stay somewhat competitive with our neighbors. And we have added a long-term subrate at one-fifty.
Yeah, he, were you the motion of the?
Oh, John, yes.
The reason for a long-term subrate to be higher than a preferred subrate is the long-term sub would be somebody that actually has a new lesson plans, do the grading, do all that. And preferred sub is just basically coming in and working the day based on a, somebody that might be out for a day and they're just running off their current plans. So these would be for returning leaves, long-term health, long-term healthcare needs, things like that, that we have to find somebody for somewhere anywhere between eight, ten, twelve weeks, or maybe even longer.
Those are just about different permanent subs?
We have no permanent subs. That we, they used to define like they had like a permanent building sub, but they're still paid on the preferred subrate. Really doesn't make any difference. It's all, it's all the same.
Father, will please.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Finally, number eight, recommend the motion to approve the following transportation and lieu agreements for the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Second. Question?
Uh, this is normal. Um, Ms. Sickel sent those to us, like last year, as she saw you approved one before. It was five eighty-three, eighty-six. This year, according to Department of Education workforce, transportation in lieu is six hundred and seven dollars and fifteen cents.
Father, will please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
And we said, uh, the part of six hundred and seven dollars and fifteen cents. Try those, Jen. I'd like to recommend that the board approve the minutes from the U.S. Following meeting, June twelfth, two thousand twenty-five.
So move. Second. Discussion? Father, will please.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is the financial reports. I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve the financial reports for the periods ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, and July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. So move. Second. Just here a few hot, hot points here with you. As far as the financials go, I'm just gonna focus on the July months, since we skipped the last month's meetings. We'll show our current balances. If you have any questions, of course, related to the June financials, please let me know. We finished the month of July with a total fund balance of thirteen million, seven hundred and fourteen thousand, twenty-eight dollars, fifty-five cents. That's for all funds. The general fund, we ended July with a cash balance of ten million, five hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-six cents. During the month of July, if you look at the zero-seven-zero, the capital projects fund, we spent, um, four hundred and fifty-three thousand and sixty-nine dollars. So that's some of the payments for roofing and paving starting to come in. Uh, that leaves a cash balance currently of nine hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars, twenty-one cents in the capital projects fund. We also have, though, however, with these remaining payables on these projects, we still have nine hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and forty dollars in comfort payable or purchase orders to finish out the projects and other things that we have, uh, have already committed to this year. We'll, we'll group that when we get our next. Yeah, at this point in time, that leaves like non-comber balance of only thirty-four thousand dollars and change. But yeah, as Mr. Swisher mentioned, um, the pipeline money that will transfer there, that we expect the board will transfer when it comes in, uh, will reinvigorate that fund. So we're definitely hitting the capital projects hard this year.
What is the balance of that next payment expected to be?
Well, over the, uh, it's, I wouldn't say it's one point two million dollars. No, for the year, about one point eight. We were getting about one point two since, since the settlement. We already got paid the back interest, which we were able to do, so the current, I mean, there's some depreciation, but it's for the next thirty years, but it's only, it's very minor. You're only talking about maybe ten or twenty thousand dollars off the original. So it's, it's about one point eight or more a year. And obviously, here is some depreciation, so it's not an exact figure. That depends on what the county auditor says. Yeah, and of course, some of the personal property like that will go directly to the permanent improvement fund and is in addition to the pipeline. So issued checks for July, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars and change. Yeah, those are really the high points right now. If you have any questions about any particular checks, please let me know. I'll try to respond to those.
Father, will please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend that the board approve the following revenue and budget revisions as presented. Second. Okay. There are a few more revisions that's in the fold this month. Um, when we met in June, it was really just the initial appropriations. And so some significant revisions are necessary for, um, to like make the general fund, for example, match the five-year forecast and expenditures. But they're all, and then we just received last week, um, the amounts that they are giving us for our grants. So there's budget revisions associated with that. So I'll just kind of cut to the notes at the bottom. We start on page two of the, of the report. And I'll just cover each of the revisions and the recommendations. Add one million, eight hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for the transfer out of the pipeline proceeds and the retirement fund. So that is really related to the last question, how much is gonna be moved into that O-70 fund? And also into the retirement fund, because we keep that at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars each year. Also, the second item, I'm gonna add six hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars to match the forecast. That basically brings the general fund budget up to what was forecasted. Also, the next item, add a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars for utilities. Uh, these were just basically some utilities expenses that were associated with FY twenty-five that didn't get paid until July. Uh, the need added into this year's budget to reflect that change, that timing change. The biggest one that, or the one that requires most explanation is the next one. It's, uh, this is to the general fund as well, is to add special education costs, additional ones that we expect to have this year. Hundred twenty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars for one student. It's going to be direct billed to our district, um, plus an additional four thousand for transportation. We also need an additional thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars uh, for the agreement that, um, was approved just a few resolutions ago. Also, about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars additional tuition for some students that are attending Star County Learning Center and educational alternatives in special schools. So those are the revisions for the general fund. For funds zero-zero-three and O-70, which are our permanent improvement and our capital projects fund. I have some additional amounts listed there for those to cover the existing projects and to cover the future repairs that we anticipate at this point in time. Uh, four hundred thousand dollars to the permanent improvement fund and additional thirty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars to the capital projects fund. Then for food services, um, this is just to basically max out their budget to what we expect in revenue to make it match what we expect to have come in for funding. It's possible, too. It's speculative at this point, but I think it's conceivable that, um, that we may need to transfer some money into the cafeteria fund before we get there. We'll see how things come out with this. Last year was a little different. We had, we run the CEP program, which is like the free and reduced launches for everyone. So my calculation, if you, my estimates here are more based on the year before, how much money we're expecting to come in. So just a little heads up there, nothing, nothing known. I hate to provide something so kind of fuzzy at this point, but I just wanted to give you a heads up in case it turns out that way. Because part of the reason we're saying that is that we've been kind of riding on the cash balance that's been in the cafeteria because of, about three, four years ago, we had one year where the entire food cost for the year were paid for with the COVID federal money. So that gave us sort of artificially high balance that we can spend down. So that's why I say that. Obviously, later in the year, I'll have some more, a better idea of what's coming in from there. But either way, um, we're gonna try to keep our attention on controlling costs there, so it's, it's been.
Is it a concept for that program?
We did, we opted out of, out of the community education provision program just because, um, we did not see the return and the investment based on, uh, what the possible expectation was for the kids that used it. And, um, when we looked at our overall fund, where it was at, and we felt that would be best just to go back to the way the district has always done it, which is you guys approved back in, you know, lunch rates for breakfast and lunch, go from there. Obviously, if the family qualifies, um, just like they do, they submit their free and reduced form, and then it all will be the same. It's just for parents that don't, and they're just gonna be charged their lunch if they choose not to pack, or choose to buy and not pack. Yeah, just for perspective, too, um, like last year at cafeteria, the expenditures were one million, two hundred and fifty, one thousand, three hundred and twenty-six, six dollars. So it's an expensive program to keep the money, but obviously necessary. Obviously, we got reverse from, of course, that's what that is. But that's what happens, how our, our money comes in and it's basically our, our district and our district makeup. This was the recommendation that we got from the state when we looked at this. We did gulliver way to this recommendation. They suggest to go back to where we were.
That one point two million is that staff and?
Yes.
How many, or?
Yeah, that's everything, that's all.
Thank you.
Um, a couple more revisions as well from the O-07 fund. Um, increase the budget to reflect, uh, what we spend each year, or typically. So these are some of our grand things, like the folk scholarship. Zero thirty-five fund, add a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, that's to reflect the money that is part of that transfer to the general fund that we'll do with the pipeline proceeds. And the student activity funds, the two hundred funds, add sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Basically, the, each activity group requests their budget, and they have enough cash in there to do it. We're just expecting enough. We'll increase the budget to reflect whatever they plan on. The last items are combined are for our federal grants. And the revisions that you see there are to add or change the budgets to reflect what allocation the state just released last year. Kind of a lot of exciting stuff there. We have requests, it's, I think, on the voices.
Super exciting. Okay, Father, will please.
All right. Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend that the board approve the following fund-to-fund transfers. Eleven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighteen cents from the class of two thousand twenty-five to the class of two thousand twenty-nine. And five thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty-one cents from the class of two thousand twenty-two to the class of two thousand twenty-six.
I'll move. Second.
Uh, this is difficult. The, the classes do that. Any related funds that they have, they usually designate to another class. They choose which ones. Uh, we have two on here this time, because I was just, when I was looking over this transfer, I realized there was still cash remaining in the one. This, which should have taken place about the time that I was hired in the previous treasurer last. So I think it just slipped the crap.
The treasurer does arbitrarily, the class officers, have any say in that?
Actually, yeah, they, um, I think I love loading into the board docs, but, you know, they, we have to get their authority to do that. So the, uh, the class officers sign on, request that, and sign it, and send this request to do that. And each of these classes, uh... And each of these classes, like the class of 2025, just FY2, their directive was that they were buying a picnic table, like a poly fund, a real nice one for the district. And then the remaining funds were to be transferred to the following class. Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Kropko?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend that the board approve the agreement with the auditor of state's local government services section to compile the annual financial statements for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025. Some move?
Second. This is the standard letter we get, correct?
Yeah, this is really a required audit. And speaking of audits too, just a little quick update as well. They're just finished up like the draft of our 2024 audit, FY24 audit. And so they'll be releasing that to the public very soon. And so I had to mention that because as you can see here, we're finishing one audit and immediately started the next. It looks like it's not stopped. But this, and the cost, there's a cost to this too. This agreement for them to do this audit is $14,400. It's not, it's not exceed that amount. They anticipate, they estimate 180 hours worth of their work to do it. And it's one of the two audits that we'll have done.
Call the roll please.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Kropko?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Item number six, change orders related to the summer paving. Like recommended that the board approve the following change orders. Concrete sidewalk area around the middle school, $10,890. Flagpole base at the middle school, $7,200. Concrete at the board office entrance, $2,587. Concrete walk to the middle school door, door number five by the gym, $18,977. Second.
Okay. Call the roll please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Kropko?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend that the board approve the following donation. From the Stark County, or the Stark Community Foundation, the John N. and Normal TIPA, excuse me, we start, the Stark County, Stark Community Foundation, John N. and Norma Tipo Lucille M. Crone Memorial Fund. This is for assistance in the education of primary and secondary school students in the amount of $300. So. Second. This is including but not limited to folks, school supplies, clothing, or other items necessary to permit a child to attend school. Very nice.
Thank you. Call the roll please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Kropko?
Yes.
Personnel.
Personnel, the, the board is okay with, I will do a brief commentary, but we will consent one vote for personnel. Okay, personnel, we have one certified resignation that came in over the summer, since June. Classified resignations, we had two. We had supplemental, we have three supplemental resignations. We have a few certified staff hires that we actually had wrapped up right at the end of June. We had very, I'm very proud to say that we did not have any staff leave in July at all. So it's been, it's been a quiet month. We have our classified staff hires that we need to fill that people that left. We have our tutor hires that we just bring back. Our tutors are non-renewed every year, so we just bring them back based on our availability with our funding through the CCIP. We have our classified RIT recalls. These are our paraprofessionals and bussies. And we have one long-term sub hire that is for Eric Tanner, start of the year over at Portico. We have our certified substitute list, our classified substitute list, both of those which will continue to grow. We have a certified staff transfer, which we have a teacher that's requesting to go to a tutor. So she is, it'd be a change for her. We have supplemental appointments for 25, 26 school year. And we have one supplemental pay correction that was incorrect in June.
Your motion?
It's unmoved. Second.
Discussion? Call the roll please.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Kropko?
Yes.
Okay, upcoming events, Monday, August 18th, we have our new teacher day. So they will get a tour of the districts with Renee and I on the school bus. We take all our new teachers because most of them really don't understand quite how large our district is. It gives an idea, they may only work in one building, not knowing where the other four buildings are. Tuesday, August 19th, freshman orientation, it's always a good morning there. Obviously, Monday, August 25th, is our convocation here in the building. So please try, you can make that available in your calendars. Please try to attend, that would be wonderful in the morning. September 2nd is obviously the first day for our students. And our community day, which we do every year, is September 12th. That'll be a home game against Lewisville. And by the way, that's already week four of high school football at that point in time.
Next board of education meeting will be September 11th, 6:00 PM, right here at the L P. If they have motion to adjourn. Some move?
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll please.
Mr. Kropko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Thank you, good night.